Welcome.
We apologize for the difficulties. The Facebook Live link was not acting right, so we finally got it to work. We had to beat it into submission.
Plus, we were trying to make sure that everybody got in, that needed to get in, the candidates and everyone running for school board. Again, welcome, and we want to thank you all, all sixty-two of you for joining, and we're really excited to be able to moderate this 2020 Little Rock School, Little Rock School District School Board Candidate Virtual Forum this evening. And we want to first, we're gonna give like a little outline of how the forum will be conducted so that you can have some idea of how we're going to be doing this throughout our meeting, our forum meeting. And before we do that,
Thank our partners.
Yeah, we're gonna thank our partners. Let's do that. Actually, my name, let me introduce myself first of all. My name is Clarice Abdou Bay. I am one of the co-conveners of the Arkansas Peace and Justice Memorial Movement. And
I'm Kwame Abdou Bay. I am one of the co-conveners of the Arkansas Peace and Justice Memorial Movement as well.
Yes, and we are very excited again to be here. We want to thank our partners. We have a nice group, a handful of partners who've decided to, you know, come on board and us get together to host this forum that we think is very, very important. First, we want to thank the Grassroots Arkansas, who is one of our partners. We want to thank them. Hope you're on the, on the call. The Urban League of Arkansas, we want to thank you. Arkansas United, Dunbar Historical Neighborhood Association, and Indivisible Central Arkansas. And then Little Rock Central Arkansas. And last but not least, Arkansas Public Policy Panel. So we want to thank
And of course,
all of the partners for us getting together and being a part. We are here, grassroots. Awesome. All right. And so Kwame, I'm gonna roll it over to you so you can do the rules of engagement? Or you just want to do an outline of how, how we're doing it?
Yeah, well, we're just basically gonna give a rough outline and get this started, get this party started.
Okay. I guess I'm, I'm giving it?
Yes.
Okay. So we are going to, we're, we're going to go into a questions. We're gonna do questions first. No audio. Tina, we're, we're reading messages too also. We're gonna go, we're gonna go into questions first for the candidates. We, we want to welcome all candidates. We will allow you to introduce yourselves and also let us know. You will have, when you do introduce yourself, you will have, how long do they have, Kwame? About?
Introduce yourself. In the, your opening statements will be ninety seconds. And all of the candidates already have the rules, so
Yes.
we don't need to go over that.
So again, openly, opening statements will be ninety minutes.
Ninety seconds.
Ninety seconds.
Minutes will be here.
Sorry. Very long day. Will be ninety seconds, I'm sorry. And you'll get a chance to introduce yourself and then yourselves and then, and then your platform. And so we'll do that. And then we'll go into our questions from the community and also from, well, not from the community, from the different organizations, the partner organizations that we read off today. We have, we have our little homemade jar again. This is a cute community event. We're gonna keep it real organic here. And so let's get started.
Yeah, let's go ahead and
We will, once we, well, before we get started, let me complete our, our format. Once we do, once we do our questions, we will then go into our breakout rooms. After we do the, the questions from the, the partnering organizations, we'll go to the breakout rooms and that'll be fifteen minutes. We will, we have different, those who have given us the information as to where you want to go. We will be placing you in those rooms. We would also like it, when would you like this information?
For those of you that have not already told us what zone breakout room you want to be in, please send us a private chat.
Yes.
Because everyone will need to go into one of those breakout rooms when the time comes. Let's get this.
Yes, yes. So you, you'll need to go into, and so that's what, we'll be able to place you in those rooms. And then we will send you a broadcast message. Everyone will get it saying your time starts now. And then you'll have fifteen minutes to, to talk with your, what did, what did you just do?
Just keep going.
We'll have, you'll have fifteen minutes to talk with your, your cand, your candidate about, messed up something there. Talk personally with your candidate. There you go. And ask any questions that you, you'd like. And so we wanted to create those rooms. Thank you to Lori from Indivisible for providing that ideas for breakout rooms. And so we'll do that. And then after that fifteen minutes, we will give you a countdown. You will then come back to the main. You come back to the main room with everyone else. And then we will ask, we will let the candidates answer questions, twenty minutes, a twenty-minute timeframe for candidates to answer, answer any question that, that was not asked of them, that they were interested in asking. And then we will take questions from the community. And, and then that'll be it.
Finally, the candidates will each have sixty-second closing statements.
Yes. And so that, that's what's gonna happen. And when we get to each spot, we will then, you know, let you know how this will go so that you, you're not trying to remember all of what I just said as far as the outline is concerned. So we're gonna get started. Again, thank you for joining us.
Okay. Our, let me tell you the order that we use random.com to come up with the order for how we're asking the questions. And how we're gonna do is we're asking the questions via zone. And then we're going to do it alphabetically. Once we get into the zone, and then everything will be reversed for the closing. So let me give you the order for the zones, for the opening statements. Zone three, zone seven, zone two, zone four, zone eight, zone five, zone one, zone six, and zone nine. So starting with the zone three, we're going to go ahead and open the floor up to Tommy Branch Jr. Tommy Branch Jr., you now have ninety seconds for your opening statement.
Sorry, sorry. Thank you for having me here. I'm Tommy Branch Jr. I'm running for Little Rock School Boards, Zone Three. Not new to the board. I, I served a year on the board, Little Rock School Board, and it was exciting and innovating. I would just like to say that I'm happy to be here. I also served as a liaison to the charters in the public school after the takeover. So just happy to be here. Thank you, I'm Tommy Branch Jr., running for Zone Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. We appreciate your introduction. And next?
Next is Evelyn Hemp Hill Callaway. We're still in Zone Three.
Stone, Zone Three. Is Evelyn available?
Yeah. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Evelyn Hemp Hill Callaway. I'm a retired teacher from the Little Rock Public Schools. I've taught, I've taught over forty-one years in total. I think that I would have a lot to add and to the school district and to, to the board. I'm familiar with vernacular. I am familiar with some of the problems that were going on when I was still there. For instance, reading, which, which was a problem at that point in time. And I have many more things that I'd like to talk about. But I'd like to say that I have four adult children that graduated from the Little Rock Public Schools and two adult grandchildren. So I do believe in public education.
Thank you, Evelyn.
I'm still on?
Oh, yes.
Yes, thank you. And next we have
Some of my concerns with public I don't know how long I had.
Ms. Callaway, your, your ninety seconds are up. We need to go to the next candidate, and that's Michael Sanders. Michael Sanders, you have ninety seconds for your opening statement.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Michael Sanders. I am seeking to become Zone Three Representative on the Little Rock School Board, Little Rock School District School Board. I am blessed to be married to Renata Sanders for twenty years. We have three sons, Braxton, Brennan, and Bryson. Braxton is a sophomore at Henderson State University, a graduate of Central High. Brennan attends Central High. He's a junior. And Bryson is a ten-year-old musical genius at Wakefield Elementary. I am also a proud, class of ninety-two graduate of Little Rock Central High. I have a BA degree in political science from Henderson State University, a master's in criminal justice from UALR. I'm the associate minister and youth pastor at New Door Baptist Church. And I have been a, a volunteer in public schools for, since about two thousand. I volunteer my time coaching youth athletics, mentoring at Promise Youth, and currently serving as a mentor and advisor to the T-Rich Dream Believe Work Foundation. I have approximately twenty-four years of work experience in youth development, youth training, prevention, and intervention work. I currently serve as the Community Resource Manager for the City of Little Rock Department of Community Programs, where we provide funding, services for families in the form of after-school, out-of-school time programming, reentry services, and most importantly, summer youth employment opportunities. I believe that we are greater together. The Bible talks about one body and many parts. And I think that we can be greater together.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. All right. Our next candidate, we're going to Zone Seven now. And Zone Seven, Ryan D. Davis, you have ninety seconds to introduce yourself.
Thank you. Thank you. Glad to be a part of this public forum. Glad for the opportunity to run, to represent Little Rock Zone Seven on our school district board. Thank you to the Arkansas Peace and Justice Memorial Movement, Grassroots Arkansas, Urban League of the State of Arkansas, the Dunbar Historic Neighborhood Association, Indivisible Arkansas United.
Pardon me, Mr. Davis, can you hold on a second? Can everyone else please mute yourself? I need everyone else to mute yourself.
Mute everybody. Appreciate you, Kwame.
Oh, Kwame, I think that was Ms. Wiley trying to get in.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
The, the fourth candidate in Zone Three, I think that was Ms. Wiley speaking.
Okay, okay. All right.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Davis. I'm gonna start your timer over. I apologize about that.
Sure, no, no, no problem, no problem. Was, was just expressing my, my gratefulness to the, to the seven organizations who are hosting this forum, a very important forum. One about something that's a long time coming. I'm Ryan D. Davis. I'm a father, and I'm a proud product of Little Rock Public Schools, and I'm a longtime and consistent advocate for students and for equity in those schools. And just as, you know, a way of introducing my, my personal thing, you know, I just want to say that after five years of a failed state takeover, you know, I, I feel like we're back at square one and we have this opportunity. But it's an urgent opportunity toward making this district and its schools work for all of the children and all of its families. And, and that's my aim. And I know the board is more, more than that. I know it's some of the seemingly mundane things connected to policy, to personnel, to curriculum, to budgets. But all of those things equal an opportunity and an urgency in this district to, to, to be the kind of schools that all kids need. And so I'm grateful to be able to be in this race. I'm grateful to be in a city so actively connected to the schools, which are our Commonwealth. And, and thank you to you all again.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We really appreciate you. And next, we're gonna go back to one of the candidates in, in Zone Three, Monica Wiley. Are you, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Yes, we apologize.
No problem, no problem. Well, I'm Monica Wiley, Zone Three candidate. And I just will quickly say that my stand is creating equity in education. That is, and I'm solely for that. And I plan on, if elected, to that, to do that by inspiring, impacting, improving, and increasing student achievement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. And we're gonna jump back to Zone Seven. Norma J. Johnson, you have ninety seconds to introduce yourself.
Norma? Are you here?
Norma J. Johnson, are you, are you on the call?
Okay.
Okay.
We will come back if she is having some issues signing on. We're gonna keep going.
Next is Zone Two. We have Sandrika Morning. Sandrika Morning is running unopposed. However, she agreed to participate in this forum. Sandrika, you have ninety seconds to introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me, Kwame and Clarice. I'm glad to be here. But hey, everybody, I'm the poet, the artist, the creator, and energy curator. My background is in teaching poetry and creative writing. I've worked with Everest Youth my whole adult life. And I was born and raised in southwest Little Rock, so I'll be representing Zone Two from a very personal standpoint. So I'm super excited about that. I got my degree in insurance and risk management from the University of Central Arkansas. Currently, I serve as the Arts and Education Coordinator for the state of Arkansas. So I'm very much so into the arts. And I'm really excited about serving because I'm interested in making sure that all students are afforded the same educational opportunities and resources to achieve.
Thank you, Sandrika Morning. We appreciate you. Thank you for joining us.
And now we're going to Zone Four, which is also unopposed. We have Leigh Ann Wilson, who has agreed to join us even though she's unopposed. Please go ahead, Leigh, Leigh Ann Wilson, you have ninety seconds.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much for hosting this. I think a big part of what has been missing the last five years is community input and involvement. That's a bigger reason why I'm running. I am a licensed social worker here in the state of Arkansas. I have a third grader at Forest Heights here in the district. My niece and nephew are in the district, and my spouse is a teacher in the district. A big reason why I wanted to run is because I want the community to be involved and have a say. I absolutely have advocated for the return of local control, have been on the picket line, have been at meetings. I want the community to have a say in the decisions that affect their kids and their community. I want the teachers and educators to have input in decisions that affect their job and their kids because that's what they are. They're their kids too. And thank you guys so much again for hosting this and putting this out there. And I do just have to plug because it's an audience I would normally reach. It is September, it is sickle cell month. I'm wearing red for sickle cell. If you don't know what it is, please go to uams.sicklecell.edu and learn more. I will talk about sickle cell all day long. That's another passion of mine. We'll talk about equity and disparities in our society. That absolutely applies to sickle cell patients and the disease.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We appreciate that additional thirty seconds for that plug for sickle cell because it's very important. Now we are in Zone Eight. Zone Eight, we have two candidates in Zone Eight, but only one is with us. That's Greg Adams. Greg Adams, will you take ninety seconds to give us your opening statement, please?
Thank you. My name is Greg Adams. I'm a social worker at Arkansas Children's Hospital and the father of two graduates from our school district schools, went pre-K all the way through high school. I started volunteering with Little Rock Public Schools at King Elementary back in nineteen ninety-four, even before my kids started. And then have got more involved back in two thousand and ten when I was on the elected, when I was elected to the Little Rock School Board. And I served there until the state took over in two thousand and fifteen. And we made some progress during that time, during some very difficult challenges at times, but we made progress. And then after the state took over, I served as a co-chair for the Civic Advisory Committee for that first year of the state takeover and thought real long and hard about whether or not it was the right thing to get back involved. But I was so, I'm so concerned that these first few years, when we go back to local control, that it goes well because there's such an opportunity to start into a positive trajectory if we can handle this well, that I was so concerned that I've decided, okay, I need to do something about that concern. And I need to try to make my contribution. So that's why I've decided to run. And I am hopeful to be able to join all these other great experienced dedicated candidates and make a great start for the Little Rock School District after the election in November. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Yes, thank you. We're gonna pop back up to Zone Seven. We're trying to make sure that we have, we allow candidates to get their, to give their platforms and introduce themselves. I know we are all working with technology, so we're gonna, we're gonna allow
Norma J. Johnson, she just was able to get on with it. So you have ninety seconds.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, how you guys doing? I'm sorry about that. I had to change computers.
You're fine.
Anyway, okay, thank you. I am Norma Jean Johnson. You guys can still hear me? Hello?
You can hear you, keep going.
Perfectly.
I'm sorry. And I am running for Zone Seven. And in Zone Seven, I have six elementary schools, two middle schools, and one high school. I think the most important thing that people need to know about me is that I'm a professional volunteer and I'm also a community worker. And my focus is about the students. And the students, that curtails the teachers, the leaders, the counselors, the community, the neighbors. That is my concern because everybody in that circle has an impact on their student. And I'm trying to ensure that most and all students have a very strong educational background so that they will be college-ready and career-ready. That is my focus. Hello?
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much.
All right, we are now going to Zone Five. And we would like for Mr. Stuart Mackey Senior to take ninety seconds for his opening statement.
Thank you, and thanks for having me. I am Stuart Mackey. I'm running for Zone Five of the Little Rock School Board. Over the years, I've mentored, coached, and volunteered in the public schools. And now I have the opportunity to serve in a greater, even more important, even more important capacity. Public service has deep roots in my family. Sorry, this is not a task I take on lightly. I take it on, understand the requirement of the job and expectations of the shareholders. Suzanne, my wife, and I have parented four Little Rock School District students, two central high graduates, a foreign exchange student, and a DCFS student that aged out of the foster care system. I've served on public boards, private boards, associations, a foundation, and church governance boards. I've been involved in regional and state leadership classes as well as regional and state-level Realtors Association. I regularly represent clients in front of the city board and make presentations of Little Rock School Board. I've counseled school boards and worked with the last seven superintendents for Little Rock School District on physical plan issues for the acquisition and disposition of district land and buildings. As a board member for Little Rock School District, I can leverage this experience to help form a strong foundation for the new path forward through a locally-elected board. We need to build trust, and the best way to do that is to start with, with listening. We need to be willing to hear multiple opinions and understand that there may be more than one answer. Real communication can create a trust that's been missing for some time. I'm Stuart Mackey, and I'm running for Zone Five. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. We appreciate you.
Now we have Ally Nolan. You have ninety seconds.
Hi, I'm Ally Nolan, and I am running to represent Zone Five on the new Little Rock School Board. I am running for school board because I believe in the transformative power of public education to change individual lives and entire communities. Little Rock is at a crossroads, and it is up to all of us to step up and meet this challenge. When my daughter was in kindergarten, I discovered that most Arkansas students only get about seventeen minutes of recess time per year, or per day. And I went to the legislature. I helped form a group. We went to the legislature, helped draft legislation, I testified. And I formed a strong bipartisan coalition to unanimously pass a law that would help guarantee an age-appropriate amount of recess time for every Arkansas student. And as an LRSD parent, I became very frustrated that we didn't have a voice in decisions that were being made about our schools. And so I went to the meetings. I found my voice as an advocate for teachers, families, and students. Standing next to my friend Vicki on the steps of Little Rock Central High the night of the candlelight vigil was one of the proudest moments of my life because not only was I on the right side of history, but I chose to use my privilege and my platform to fight for what is right. That is why I'm running for school board now. I know I have the skills and the ability to do good, and I care about making this district better and serving our kids. So I would appreciate your vote, Ally Nolan, for Zone Five.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan.
Thank you, Ally. Thank you, Ms. Nolan. We appreciate you.
All right. And now we're going to jump over to Zone One. We have Michael Mason, who is our third unopposed candidate who has agreed to participate tonight. Mr. Mason, you have ninety seconds to make your open, opening statement.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for inviting me to the forum. My name is Michael Mason. A Little Rock School District parent. I'm a graduate of Little Rock Central High School, class of nineteen seventy-six. I am an Equal Opportunity Specialist, which is a Fair Housing Investigator for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. I currently sit on the Community Advisory Board for Little Rock School District. My reason for volunteering, in two thousand and fifteen, I volunteered to, to work as a, in, at McClellan High School where my daughter and my children attended. So I have been a passionate supporter of students. My mother taught at Little Rock Hall for over twenty years. And in those, in that time, she passed on that passion of helping students. And I believe that we are on our way to fight for public education, and I think we need to continue to fight for public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. We appreciate that.
But now we're gonna go to Zone Six, and Vicki Hatter, you have 90 seconds for your opening statement.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am Vicki Hatter, and I am running for Zone Six. So I am a longtime education parent advocate. I am a parent of children that, one is still in the Little Rock School District. The other one have completed his time there. And I am running because I have been a very consistent and a very involved parent, not only as a parent, but also as an advocate, working alongside of a few of the candidates that's running tonight. One thing that I do want you guys to know, outside of me being a mother, an advocate, and then a resource to the community, a trusted voice and face to always speak truth and to make sure that our children, our students, is receiving an equitable education, as well as our teachers having the resources. I am a stark volunteer, not only with a community grassroots program, but also with Arkansas State PTA, our kids Reed, VIPS, which is volunteers in the schools, Ford NGL, which is for next generational learning. I've been involved in that for the past two years, helping create that master plan that we see at Southwest High, and too, as well as in all of our high schools in Little Rock and throughout the county. And then, of course, community schools, having conversations going back, even with a couple of our members here today, about community schools, and what does that look like and what is that in Arkansas, as well as just being involved, speaking in front of the legislator in regards to issues and bills that would harm our district as far as the voucher. You guys remember that voucher that Senator Hammer proposed, as well as the millage back in 2017. I was a part of that. So I appreciate you guys for allowing this opportunity for us to come together and reach the public. Blessings.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Lou Jackson from Zone Six. You have 90 seconds for your opening statement.
Good evening. I am Lou Jackson, and I am running for Little Rock School District School Board, Zone Six. I am a candidate that will promote safe and healthy schools. I will also promote equitable educational services. I'm an advocate for all students, and I believe that all students will, can, and shall learn. I'm a candidate who recognizes and stands strong for community and parental needs. I'm a candidate who recognizes the student voice. I also advocate a firm commitment for improving teaching and learning. I will represent you, and I will also get the job done. I'm a retired educator. As of June 2020, I am a proud parent of two Argyle High School graduates and two granddaughters currently at Argyle High School. Once again, I am the candidate that believes your kids are our commitment. Lou Jackson, School Board, Zone Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I was getting ready to say, sorry, Ms. Jackson, my bad. Chris Kingsby, you now have 90 seconds for your opening statement.
Thank you, Colleen. I'm Chris Kingsby. I'm born and raised right here in Little Rock. I'm a proud product and recent graduate of the Little Rock Public Schools. Listen, growing up, I would often tell people that the morning routine my younger brother and I had was so much different than the morning routine we wanted for other children in Little Rock. We'd get up around 4:30 or 5:00 and walk five blocks, each carrying four empty water jugs, down Marley the King Jr. Drive. This journey was our access to clean and running water. Like so many children in Little Rock, my younger brother and I knew that the only way to escape inner generational poverty was through receiving the best education possible, even if that meant a five-block walk. Listen, I don't pretend to have all the answers or know all the answers, but what I do know is, Little Rock, it's no longer enough for us to say that eventually it will get better. Right now, we need a school board that will stand up and give our students, teachers, and schools the support they need to thrive and ensure that every child has access to a high-quality public education. Listen, there's a lot of people on the ballot in Zone Six, and I'm making it my job to reach voters where they are in every corner of the zone and bring them along with me on this journey to build a more equitable Little Rock School District. Chris Kingsby, Little Rock School Board, Zone Six.
Thank you, Mr. Kingsby. We appreciate that.
And we're gonna round out our opening statements. We're going to Zone Nine with King B. Bangdings. You have 90 seconds.
All right, thank you. I'm Detective King Bangdings. So just to start off, I'm not a politician. I'm a scientist. I'm an educator. I'm a wife and mother of two young children in Little Rock School District. And some of you are probably asking, why would a scientist run for the school board? Well, I'll tell you why. I have a passion for public education. I deserve, all children deserve equal access to quality-first, quality public education. And second, as a scientist, I feel that now in the time of this pandemic, there is mistrust in my profession, so I feel it's a moral obligation for someone like myself to run. I bring a diversity of voices and experiences to the sector of public education. I'm an experienced scientist. I've authored papers, wrote grants, mentored and trained students, both in the laboratory and in a traditional lecture setting. I'm an experienced educator. As a Howard Tudes Medical Institute Teaching Fellow, I was given the opportunity to learn and implement cutting-edge scientific teaching principles in large lecture classrooms. I understand the language of teaching, learning, and assessment. We utilize Understand by Design to help create learning objectives and then develop assessment strategies to meet those objectives. As such, if I'm elected, I will utilize both my experience and strength as a scientist and educator to help shape education policy, curriculum, so focus on math and science to lift up all the children in Little Rock School District. So I'm King Bangdings. I'm running in Zone Nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bangding. Doctor. Doctor Bangding. Thank you so very much.
All right. Now, there are three candidates that are not participating tonight. I wanted to let you guys know about that. Jeff Wood in Zone Nine is not participating. He has some type of a meeting that he's dealing with, dealing with his professional status, so he's at something that he could not reschedule, so that's why he's not here. Benjamin R. Coleman for Zone Eight. He's not here because he's in a bereavement period, because he recently had a family member who passed away. And friend Shay Anderson, Zone Six, she's not here. She originally registered. However, she decided not to participate. So these are all of our candidates, and we're gonna go ahead and get into the questions. We have the jug right here with all the questions, and we've already set up the random way we're gonna do it, and we're gonna, the first question will be Zone Six, and we're gonna keep it in, we should keep it in alphabetical order to be easier on us, right?
Sure.
All right, Zone Six, the first person, Vicki Hatter. And you have 60 seconds to answer each question.
What are two current strengths of the Little Rock School District that you will seek to cultivate? Why do you see these as strengths?
Oh, well, two of the strongest strengths, one of them is our teaching force. We have a very solid teaching, a highly qualified teaching force. And the other thing is the community engagement and the interest in parents. So those are some of the great qualities outside of all of the benefits that Little Rock School District has to offer as far as our advanced courses, as far as opportunities and partnerships that the district have. And what was the second part of that question, please? I missed it.
Why do you see these as strengths?
I see them as strengths because it shows that our district, our district, it is a complex district. However, it's not terrible. And as long as we elect the right people into office, because our system as a whole is only as good, right, as the people we elect, and the accountability piece, we will continue to grow that.
Thank you, Vicki.
You're welcome.
All right, the same question. We will go to Lou Jackson. If you could ask her the question again.
Okay. What are two current strengths of the Little Rock School District that you will seek to cultivate? Why do you see these as strengths?
Two current strengths I see are the employees, teachers, and administrators, and specifically the content personnel. I see these as strengths. Now, this one. The other one would be organization and structure. But I see the teachers, employees, administrators as strengths because of their outlined capabilities and professionalism that enable them to teach our students. I see organization and structure as a strength from top down, bottom up, due to the fact that once those structures are in place, those systems can cultivate, and you can proceed to run a good organization. School will become school.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the same question, we have Chris Kingsby. Go ahead and answer the question.
We will repeat the question. What are two current strengths of the Little Rock School District that you will seek to cultivate, and why do you see these as strengths?
Well, I agree with Ms. Jackson and Ms. Hatter. One of the main strengths is the sense of our educators. We have some of the most talented and committed educators right here in the Little Rock Public School System. If elected to the school board, I will work tirelessly to cultivate that relationship that the board has and administration has, all the way down to our educators. When we uplift our educators, we uplift our entire education system. And what we have seen over the last five and a half years has been a continuation of disregard for the sense of work environment for all of our teachers. Our sense of community, Ally said it best earlier, when they had that one Little Rock School District rally, it showed the strength of who we are as a community. And when we say one LRSD, we mean one LRSD. So I believe if elected to the board, I will work tirelessly to make sure that our community feels as if it has some input and validation inside our public school system.
Thank you.
Now we're going to Zone Four. And first of all, before we go to that, Leigh Ann Wilson, the unopposed candidates have the option of whether or not to answer questions. Are you interested in answering a question?
I am happy to answer a question.
All right, well, next question is yours.
All right, Leigh Ann. Who would, sorry, who should set the rules in governing Little Rock School Board procedures, methods, and behavior? Who should enforce them? I'm gonna read it again, because I'm missing my punctuation here. Who should set the rules governing the Little Rock School Board procedures, methods, and behaviors? Who should enforce them? You have 20 seconds. No, 60 seconds. I'm sorry. 60 seconds.
Thank you. So I think the rules should be set by the board that is elected. We need to set ground rules for ourselves and how we're gonna treat fellow board members and what our expectations are gonna be for how we treat the community. I think we ultimately are held accountable to the people who elect us, and they obviously can vote us out if they're unhappy with what we're doing and what's going on. But I really think that the board needs to be held accountable to the board and to the people of the Little Rock community, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to our next question. Here's the next question, and we're in Zone Seven.
Zone Seven.
Zone Seven, Ryan D. Davis.
All right. Here's your question. In your opinion, what should the public know about the state takeover of the Little Rock School District that is not already widely known?
I don't know whether it's widely known or not, but I'll say that the district should know that under the standards of the state, that more schools are failing after five years of the state takeover than were originally when the schools were taken over. But I'll add to that, that they should know that there's an attempt by an executive appointee to circumscribe the duties of the will-be duly-elected board members. And I question, I'm not an attorney, Ally, Ms. Brownstein, but I question the legality of an executive appointee constraining the personnel and fiduciary responsibilities of a duly-elected board. And I question how effective a board can be under those constraints. And so I think it bears, not only just thinking about, but it bears some action toward resolving those issues, and I think the community should know about that.
Thank you. And now we have Norma J. Johnson, same question.
Okay, here we go. In your opinion, what should the public know about the state takeover of the Little Rock School District that is not already widely known?
You know what? I can concur with Mr. Ryan Davis on some things he mentioned. But I also would like to say that it was a state takeover. They did take it over. But I try not to focus in the past. I'm hoping that as a board, we can get in and do what we need to do to get the authority we need to push the Little Rock School District forward. I do understand that it's crucial. I get history. I love history. But if I continue to focus on what they did for five years, then I can't focus on what we need to do for another five years ahead. So I'm almost sure that the individuals in the public are aware of what happened when the state took over. So what I would like to do is try to focus on what we can do to push the Little Rock School District forward as a school board. And I really don't believe we'll have any problems. I do get it that we may be limited, but that can be just a small barrier that we can conquer as a board, whoever the nan are that are seated. I strongly believe in my heart that that is something that we can conquer, because I strongly believe that those are running, are doing it, because they feel strongly that they have something to offer. So, okay, this is over? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. But thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we're going to Zone Five. The next question is for Stuart Mackey Senior.
Here's your question. Do you feel that charter schools and LRSD schools should be governed by the same rules? You have 60 seconds.
Sorry, I can answer that in less than 60 seconds. The easy answer there is yes, they should be governed by the same rules. But the problem is, I don't think they have been. Clearly, there have been schools that have had financial trouble, that have been given passes by the State Department of Education, that shouldn't have gotten passes, A, because of where they were, and B, because the standards weren't the same for other schools. So taking less time than I should, yes, the standard should be exactly the same for state charters as they are for public schools, unless there's some incredibly outlandish reason that there's some purpose that we are trying to attain that can't be done unless the rules are the same. Thank you for the question.
And thank you so much for the answer. We're gonna keep going.
We're in Ally Nolan. You have the same question.
Okay, I'm gonna read it for you. Do you feel that charter schools and LRSD schools should be governed by the same rules?
Yes, yes, I I agree. And I would say that not only do I agree with what Mr. Mackey said, I would also add that the. Entire. Basis for granting a charter includes waivers from those rules, so it's not just some schools, it's the the foundation of the concept. And I would agree that. Unless there is an unmet need that is being addressed. In very, very rare circumstances, I think there's one in particular, for example. And that has been started in a state that is to address people who have dropped out. Those are, that might be a situation where there's an unmet need, but when we're talking about. The charter schools that we have here in Little Rock, then yes, they should be governed by the same rules.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to zone three now. And our first question is for Tommy Branch Jr.
Here's your question. Is membership on the L R, on the Little Rock School Board compatible with your with your present position? And how so or why not? And I can read that again if you need me to. Okay, I'll read it again. Is membership on the Little Rock School Board compatible with your present position? How so or why not?
Yes, membership on the Little Rock School Board is very compatible with my present position and has been. Pretty much with every job I've held. It was. Like working with the Boys and Girls Club in Southwest Little Rock. As a youth coordinator to working with at-risk youth, with the Division of Juvenile Services. Being one of the only two at that time to work with people with the most violent offenders to help people in the community. And that came into the system in which we helped finding educational programs and helping. With coping skills, not only when they were incarcerated, but also when they got out. So, and now as a director over. A place with disabilities, that that we help people with disabilities, so I'm I'm, it's very compatible, thank you.
Thank you.
And our next is Evelyn Hempel Callaway.
Okay, Ms. Callaway, here's the same question for you. Is membership on the Little Rock School Board compatible with your present position? How so or why not? Ms. Callaway?
She's on mute.
Okay. We'll wait for her to unmute herself.
Trying to unmute her, see if we can unmute her.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, all right.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
It's starting.
Okay, first of all. Okay, first of all, I would like to apologize for. My non-answer from for the introduction. That I should have given. But because I was kind of nervous, because my computer wasn't working correctly. And I was not sure that you were understanding me, but. Then I I'd like to, would you read that question again?
This is ma'am.
Okay.
I sure will, and no problem about the intro, we heard you. Here's the question. Is membership on the Little Rock School Board compatible with your present position? How so or why not? You have 60 seconds.
Absolutely, I'm a, I am a retired educator with 41 years under my belt. However, I belong to a family of educators. And it's the family business. I have been retired now for six years, but I have not been, I have not been unconscious. I have watched what was going on with the Little Rock Public Schools, and I was not really happy with it. I was asked by someone recently, why should. What, what, you know, the school that where I live, they said, why was the score so low? Well, I thought that was totally a fair question, because it was the demographics, it was like the changes in administrations and whatever. So I think if I get a chance to be on this school board. I think I'd like to have some order going on with selection of staff and. And administrators. Do you realize that administrator can kill a school?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. And and I want to, I want to remind everyone, we read the outline, when you go into your individual zone breakout sessions, you'll have a chance. To kind of complete some things you to get a chance to say with the constituents, with the. Community, and so if if we go, if we cut you off because of time, we're not being ruled, we just want to be mindful of the time. For this forum, so thank you so much. We do, we do want to be consistent, absolutely, so thank you.
All right, next is Michael Sanders, same question.
Okay, here's your question, I'm gonna repeat it again. Is membership on the Little Rock School Board compatible with your present position? How so or why not?
Yes, I think it's very compatible, I feel that my current position and every position that I've had since undergraduate. Has prepared me for this role. Started out working for Rivendell Behavioral Health. I went to Flandersmith College and was Assistant Director of a Program for At-Risk Youth. I was a supervisor for the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, Juvenile Diversion Program. Director of a Homeless Program that serves families with kids. And worked for DHS, Division of Youth Services, where we worked with at-risk youth as well. And now my current role with the City of Little Rock Department of Community Programs, where we partner and work. With programs and stakeholders that work directly with the school district and provide. Services and support and intervention and prevention for the Little Rock School District.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. We are digging in the jar again for our next question.
Our next question is going to zone nine.
Zone nine. Here we go.
And that's for King B. Vangdings.
Dr. Vangdings, this is for you. The L R S D has a 60% minority student population. Do you know the percentage of minority L R S D contractors? And should numbers be equal? Should those numbers be equal, I'll re-read that. The Little Rock School District has a 60% minority student population. Do you know the percentage of the minority L R S D contractors? And should those numbers be equal?
I'm, I'm not, what, what do you mean by contractors? Sorry. Could you? Hello? I'm here. Who defines contractors?
Contractors are people who have contracts to do certain services. For the Little Rock School District, such as plumbing or electrician or, you know, the like.
Okay, so I'm I'm not, oh, I. I actually admittedly didn't know very little bit about the subject. I can imagine that contractors are probably awarded through the state. And they're probably awarded. To individuals they know. I also think that perhaps contractors are probably. More, most likely. Going to be Caucasian and white. In contrast to the percent of minority students in the school district, so. I don't know how, being a board member, how you can change that, except by advocating for change. By making sure that contracts, if awarded, can go to minority businesses as well.
Thank you so much. We have, is it a different question, same question?
No, it's a different question, but you.
But we we wanted to, we have some comments and we wanted to make a correction. There are several advocates stating that there's nearly 80%. Of the L R S D students are are minority students, so we want to make that adjustment and correction. Next question.
Okay, and this is going to zone two. Cendrika Morning, you're unopposed, would you like to answer a question? Is she there?
Yes, she may be on mute, I'm not sure. Cendrika, you there?
We'll go on to the next.
Okay.
All right, zone one, Michael Mason, you are unopposed, would you like to answer a question?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, Mr. Mason, and again, thank those those correction of stats there. Here's your question. What is your opinion of the Little Rock School District's current policies toward ESL, non-English speaking students? And what, if anything, will you do to improve it?
Well, one of the things that I do, that I've been doing for 20 years, is fighting for. Persons with, that are different, that have different languages, have. Different color, race. I've been doing that for 20 years, and the Little Rock School District needs to increase. Their abilities to service persons with different, as English as a second language. My, my district, and I think this zone one and zone two have the probably the highest concentration. Of Latino students, so it's, it's going to be important that we provide. Abilities for them to get a proper education. And I, and and I think we will, we will do a better job. Asking for support in those areas. Yes, Little Rock School District, it needs to do a better job, and we're gonna do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mason, appreciate that.
All right, next we are going to zone eight. Greg Adams, the next question is yours. That looks like a long question.
It is. Here's your question. So much damage has been done by the state takeover. On top of the longstanding challenges L R S D had before the takeover. What can you do to build trust between the L R S D administrators, educators and the community? And different factions of stakeholders in the community? I can repeat that if you need it.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Okay. You have 60.
Thank you, thank you, that's a good question. One of the things that I I think is going to be incredibly important is for this new board is to to show that it can work well together. That can be transparent and that it can be responsive to the community. That's one of the damages that's happened in the past almost six years now, is that there's not been a responsive leadership and governing body for. For the Little Rock School District. So one of the things I think needs to happen first is that whoever's elected, these nine people who will be elected. Before they are sworn in and start their work in in December. I think there needs to be a facilitated retreat style meeting for the the board members to meet together. Talk about how they want to work together as a team, because they really are a team, will will be a team along with a superintendent to lead the district. And we don't, and it's not talking about what kind of policies to have or or goals for reading, it's really about how do we want to work together as effectively as possible? So that we instill confidence in the community and show them that we listen to them, respect them, and that we can deal with our own differences and still find ways to pull together. And I think that's going to be so important, and that's really the reason that I'm running is because I want that to happen, and I want to try to help. Support that kind of process for the first few years of a new board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next question, we're going. We're going to zone seven.
Zone seven, okay.
And that's Ryan D. Davis.
What responsibility, here's your question, Ryan. What responsibilities, if any, should districts assume for dealing with such vital problems of poverty? Hunger, emotional illness or drug abuse? I can repeat the question if you need it.
No, no, well, yes, as someone who taught for seven non-consecutive years. You know, some of my most informed memories of that. Were situations where, and I taught for four years in Chicago, straight out of college and. You know, some of my most informed memories were of students who came in and who immediately put their coats on and went to sleeping class. Only to find out maybe that they didn't have heat in their home. Or students for whom I finally had the presence of mind to buy apples and and granola bars and keep stash because students were hungry. And those things affect what's happening in the classroom. Teachers. You know, are trained in their heart, but not trained in the classroom how to deal with some of those things. And so the school does have responsibility, but schools have to be equipped to do it. We can't expect teachers within the context of a classroom to also be social workers, to also be counselors, as much as they do. And I say this as someone who, when I was teaching, was a fourth generation teacher. So we have a responsibility, but we have to bring the resources to bear and the professionals. Within the schools to, you know, not help the teachers, but to take over some of those things that are social work issues. And 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 that's, you know, that's just important in general. We're responsible.
Thank you.
Okay, and the same question is going to Norma J. Johnson.
Here's your question, Norma. Okay, if you are not, before, before I ask it, if you're not speaking, will you please mute yourself? Why you, Norma? What responsibilities, if any, should districts assume for dealing with such societal problems? As poverty, hunger, emotional illness or drug abuse?
You know what, what you basically almost just described was a community school. And it's an individual basis, you have to take a student, and like I said in my opening, you have to take that circle. The counselor, the teachers, the neighborhood, the communities that surround that student. That is almost a community school there, you have to deal with the wraparound service of that individual student. And it is on an individual basis. Now, I'm not a professional, but I have some individuals in my family that deal with that, and I guarantee you, sometimes I don't even know how to deal with it because I'm not a professional and some things I've never been exposed to. But that wraparound service is what we'll have to, we will have to do it, and we'll have to be really serious about it, we just got to do it. We have to be committed. Now you have to be committed, we have to be a cohesive group. School board group, we have to do it, and we have to fight, and let me say something else too, you have to get out and you have to talk to your constituents. Since I've been on my campaign trail, I talk to people, I listen to their testimonies, I listen to the things that they need, I listen to the little bitty things they need, not the big things, it's just the little bitty things that they need.
Thank you, thank you, I was gonna say Dr. thing, Dr. Ms. Johnson. But thank you.
All right, next question, we are going to zone five and Stuart Mackey Senior.
Okay, new question. What engagement have you had with Latinx constituents in your zone? How do you plan to outreach to garner the opinions and, I'm sorry, priorities of the Latinx community? Not just in your zone, but throughout the city? And I can repeat that if you'd like me to.
I think I'm okay. As it's been stated earlier, our Latinx community is. Really kind of. Concentrated in in a one or two zones here in the city. But I've had the opportunity to bring some of that Latinx community into my house. Our DHS student was Latinx. And I had the opportunity to meet him and work with him and understand the benefits he got from the school district. I found out what limitations were placed on him because he was an ESL student in the district. And I had an opportunity to meet with his friends from from. Two high schools and some of his support friends around him, we continued to talk with him and. Work with him and and some of his friends and folks, so. It's it's been enlightening to me to find out that there are some major differences in what's being offered in our schools. And and I've been blessed to have the opportunity to work with a Latinx student. I certainly hope that part of what I can do is go out to that great new school in Southwest Little Rock and. See what they're doing out there and have a chance to meet with folks once we. Get to a place where we can all gather or where there are great celebrations to have, as well as meeting with P T S As and other groups. Because as I think Greg's mentioned, you know, we're elected by zone, but we serve as one board and.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you. All right, the same, wait a minute, I don't, oh, we're going to a different zone.
All right, new zone.
Wait a minute, hold on.
Oh, no.
No, we're not.
Ask Ms. Nolan the same question.
Ms. Ally Nolan.
Thank you. Thank you for catching that. Okay, Ali, here's your question. Same question, being what engagement have you had with Latinx constituents in your zone? How do you plan to outreach to garner the opinions and prioritize priorities of the Latinx community, not just in your zone, but throughout the city? You have 60 seconds.
My experience to date has been mostly as a volunteer in our schools. So I volunteered for the past four years at Wakefield as a tutor, and the students that I tutor are Latina young girls, and it has been a phenomenal experience to get to know them, the same students, year after year, week after week, and really get to know them and their families. And then I've also guest-taught to a group of English language learners at Hall and taught about constitutional law and free speech. And that was a phenomenal experience, to get to talk to those students about free speech. And as far as outreach, I think the key thing here is listening and not projecting onto a community what we assume the wants and the needs and the goals will be. I spoke to a parent whose son is an English language learner, and he's very, very good at math. And she was concerned about making sure that he had access to those advanced math classes despite the language barrier. And so I think that we really have to listen to communities. I've had the privilege of having a few meetings and talking to people with Arkansas United this summer, and just listening to leaders in the community and to families.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, for our next question, we're going to Zone 9, King B. Van Dings.
Dr. Van Dings, here's your question. How will you use your position as a school board member to empower students and parents? You have 60 seconds, and I can repeat it if you need me to.
So because my background is in science and in education, my hopes and plans are to use my experience as an educator to help build a better curriculum and better science policies to help lift the Little Rock School District up. I do know that overall Arkansas ranks 42nd in education, 43rd in economics. Compared to other states, we are not doing as well. In terms of math and science standards, in 2017, over 90% of the Little Rock School, over 90% of students in three of the five high school students did not meet the science and math proficiency. That's 90%. Using my experience as an educator, as a scientist, particularly in science and math, I could really make a difference, really change the district for the better to try to improve proficiency and to close the educational gap.
Thank you, Dr. Van Dings.
All right, now, we're going to Zone 2, Sandrika Morning.
Sandrika, here's your question.
Are you there?
Are you there? Okay, we will.
Well, let's, Sandrika, are you still on the call with us? Because it looks like she dropped off.
Okay.
All right.
We're going to keep going.
We're, the next, we'll take that question, and we'll take it to Zone 1, Michael Mason.
Okay, here's your question, Michael Mason. The current movement to defund the police also includes the push to eliminate police from the schools. How will you lead the Little Rock School Board in addressing this concern once it is brought before the board? I can repeat the question if you'd like. You have 60 seconds.
No, I understand the question. Defunding the police department, you know, and removing the school resource officers, that's the question, I believe, right? I don't, I don't have, I have a problem with removing school resource officers because of the past situations that we've had with people coming onto the campuses with certain weapons. One of the greatest things that I feared when I had my four children in the Little Rock School District is that somebody would come on to the campus that wasn't supposed to be there and do harm to our children. Defunding the police in the community, the police are here to serve and protect us. I know there are some, not some good police officers out there, but I think we need that security in our Little Rock School District.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
All right, we're going to Zone 8 for our next question. Greg Adams.
Hi, Mr. Adams, here's your question. What are two current weaknesses of the Little Rock School District that you will seek to address? Why do you see these as a weakness? You have 60 seconds, and I can repeat it if you need me to.
All right, thank you very much. I think there are two things, really, that are the biggest concerns for the district. One is real, and one is perception. The real concern that we have is that there, although so many good things are happening, and so many students achieve, and we have such great resources, we have too many students who are not achieving. And there's particularly a gap, racial gap, income gap for those students. And we have to find a way to narrow that gap and help those, all those students achieve, no matter what their circumstances. The other problem that we have is perception, because too much of the time that when some people outside of the district look at the district, they look at it as one thing, and they don't see the strengths that are there. They don't see the resources that are there, and they see more problems than actually exist. We do have challenges. We do have problems we have to deal with. But the perception sometimes is much too negative, and we need to be able to deal with both of those problems, perception and reality.
Thank you.
All right, and he's the only one that's representing Zone 8, so we need to go to another question.
Okay, next question. All right.
All right, we're now in Zone 6.
Zone 6, what was it going?
The first one is Vicky Hatter.
All right, Vicky, here is your question. What would you do to assist in the unification of the LRSD so that all facilities are equal? And I can repeat that?
Please do.
Okay. What would you do to assist in the unification of the Little Rock School District so that all facilities are equal? You have 60 seconds.
Okay, then I would rephrase that to make sure that they're equitable, because you can have, you can make them all equal. But if the items, the resources you're putting in the school do not meet the needs of the students, and then that is a missed chance, right, to really do some real work and provide our service. And so we need to make sure that we do school studies, as well as family and student and staff studies, to make sure that, that the resources we're placing in the schools are meeting the student body to where students are able to be successful and as well as work on student development. And so I would first do a school equity assessment to make sure, right, to get the need or needs assessment, and right to make sure that we are giving the resources that schools need, and just not saying, everybody get a pair of red shoes, and that may not work.
Thank you.
And so that is my short answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we would like for Lou Jackson to answer the same question.
Okay. Here, Mrs. Jackson, here's your question. What would you do to assist the unification of the LRSD so that all facilities are equal? You have 60 seconds.
I'll use the same wording as Ms. Hatter. I will say equitable. First, I would want to look at facility plan. Most districts have a facility plan, and see how that plan moves throughout whatever amount of years or goals that they have. And then I would like to look at, as she also said, the needs assessment. And that will be after a survey of seeing what the school facilities are composed of. There's so much involved in that, and that would include time, date, year, building, et cetera, for all facilities and operations. And you have frozen, so are you able to see or hear me?
No, not frozen, just.
Okay.
Before your time, which is really great.
Oh, okay, I said, oh, no, they can't hear me.
Oh, no, you're good, though. Thanks.
I was waiting for him to say, sorry, Ms. Jackson.
Sorry, Ms. Jackson.
Okay.
We're going to Chris Kingsby with the same question.
Okay, Chris, here's your question. What would you do to assist in the unification of the Little Rock School District so that all facilities are equal? You have 60 seconds.
Thank you. In 2004, State Representative, then State Representative Doris Elliott and State Senator Shane Broadway chaired a committee. I did a really deep evaluation of what schools and facilities across the state look like. They used that plan to make a lot of adjustments and changes in some of our school facilities. The first thing I would do if elected to that board is take that plan and compare it to what our today looks like. Have we been consistent in continuing to keep up with those changes that were addressed in that assessment? Will we take an opportunity to revisit a need to be met there? So I think the groundwork for that has already been done. I think the question then becomes, will we have elected officials who will be responsible and take up the charge, and making sure that we follow through with the groundwork that has already been laid for that?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that's our second round of questions. We're going to go to one more round of questions before we go to the breakout room.
Shaking the tape.
I'm sorry. Hold on.
There you go. Okay, where are we going?
We are going to Zone 3.
Zone 3.
Tommy Branch Jr.
Mr. Branch Jr., you have, this is your question. As an immigrant advocacy group, and this is from
Arkansas United.
Arkansas United, we are concerned about the lack of bilingual personnel in LRSD. How would you promote language access? How can LRSD address the learning needs of students from other cultures and other languages? You have 60 seconds, and I can repeat the question if you need me to.
No, ma'am. I think, first of all, we need to introduce, someone might have said that earlier, that we need to introduce more bilingual classes to allow students to have that access. And that goes for people that don't speak our language very well, just to have teachers that are able to teach them English and vice versa. And I think that would address a lot of those issues with the language barriers. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you. Right.
And we now have Evelyn Hempel Callaway with the same question.
Same question. Here's your, here's the question. Um, we are concerned about the lack of bilingual personnel in LRSD. How would you promote language access? How can LRSD address the learning needs of students from other cultures and other languages? You have 60 seconds.
Ideally, we would have someone on staff who was bilingual that could come to the classroom and help the child understand it. For instance, if you're dealing with children that only that are, who are not bilingual, and you're not bilingual yourself, they really need kind of a tutor. But if we had at least one in every school, we could, we could do that. I actually think, I've seen it done. It's, you know, it was like one of those programs we had that went away, and it was really helpful. If not, they start becoming, you know, different groups. They kind of group together, and there's this little group here, and this little group there. And by going to the different little groups, we kind of, kind of become clique-ish. We need to have a person in each school that can be bilingual. Particularly in the school, we have a lot of Hispanic students. And they have given us courses on English as a second language. And that was good for the time being. But I always thought it needs something, we needed something more, like an aide to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. And we have one final question before we go to the breakout rooms. I just looked at the time and realized that we're a little bit over our 40 minutes. So Michael Sanders, you'll have the last question before we go to the breakout rooms.
Same question, and I'll read it. As an immigrant, as a advocacy group, we are concerned about the lack of bilingual personnel in LRSD. How would you promote language access? How can LRSD address the learning needs of students from other cultures and other languages? You have 60 seconds.
Yes, I think, you know, simple answer is to be intentional and strategic. You have to plan for this. We know that it's an issue. We know that it's, it's, I don't even want to say the elephant in the room. We know that we have that gap there. And so we should be strategic in it and plan for it, and then hire more diverse staff, as simple as that. Accessing our stakeholders, our advocacy groups, our partners, going out and seeing agencies or faith-based organizations who are working with that part of the community, and access them and utilize their expertise in that area.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We are, we are finished right now with our forum. What we're going to do is we're going to go to our
Finish with the forum, we're finished.
We're not completely. With this, with this portion of the forum, we're going to go into our zone-specific breakout room so that the candidates can have a more intimate dialogue with the community in their zone. And if you are just now signing in, would you please put in the chat in a private message what zone you would like us, breakout room you would like us to put you in? Anybody who's already answered that question, you don't have to do that again. We already have that information, and that's what we'll be doing once. You have something.
And if you, and if you guys would just give me about five minutes, because we had about, oh, 100 people that registered, and they gave their zone, so I'm having to go through the list and pick out the people who aren't here on the call versus the people who are here. So what we're going to do is just give us about five minutes. You want to hum or something?
No, we're good. You will be going to your zones.
Yeah.
You'll just see our logo, and you'll, and you'll appear into your zone breakout room. We will then send a broadcast message to everyone and say that your 15 minutes starts now. And we, we want to take this opportunity to allow the candidates to be leaders in this breakout session in this room. So you're going to be leading this zone breakout session. You have 15 minutes. All, any of the community members, if you have specific questions for them, please ask those questions, but also know that there is only 15 minutes, and that we need to allow for other people to ask questions. Then we're going to come back. We'll send you a little timer after the 15, and we'll all come back to the main forum or the main room, and then we'll have more instruction after that.
Yeah, and when we come back, we have two 15-minute parts. The first 15-minute part is, we will allow any of the candidates who heard a question that they weren't asked, that they would like to address, will do that, but that's the second part. The first part is the community questions. So the community members that are on the call, if you have a question that you'd like to ask, just send it to us in a private chat, and let us know which candidate you'd like us to ask it to. And we'll start asking those questions when we come back. But we're going to put our, we're going to turn off our video and mute ourselves while we assign everybody to the breakout rooms, and it's going to take me about five to seven minutes.
Okay, here we go.
I'll just sing while y'all do that.
There you go.
Sing a song. Any request.
Please sing anything.
Okay, Dr. Davis. We're going to, I'm back up. You know what, Dr. Davis, you can go ahead and sing, A Change Is Going Coming. Hey, Ms. Jackson.
I was kidding.
Sorry, Ms. Jackson.
Really, y'all don't want me to sing. I promise. You don't want me to sing. I nominate Ryan.
Hi, Ryan.
Technical difficulties.
Ms. Callaway, how are you?
Mrs. Callaway, how you doing?
I'm doing great. How about yourself?
I'm doing I'm doing my best. I see my teacher on here. I was hoping to get a question so that I could recognize my teacher, Mrs. Joyce Underwood on here. You know.
That's my friend.
Oh, yeah. I imagine.
Yeah, we worked together at some point. But you know, one thing that's kind of disparaging to me is like, we're talking about doing all of these assessments again. And they've, they've been done. Now, the problem is what they do with them. Now, if we do another assessment, what are they gonna do with us? Like, in my, in my zone, which is zone three, we have four elementary schools, that's it. And as far as I know, they're, they're gonna close them next year, from what I understand. And then they're gonna have a K through H all the way to J Fair. And I think we're gonna have some problems with everybody in this big, this is because it's a huge district. Because I would have a problem having my preschooler get on a bus to go to, to J Fair. Now, I'm assuming that we're gonna be part of Southwest, but I don't know that for certain. And I've asked that, anybody know the answer to that question?
It is.
What?
Both, both McClellan and J Fair were, well, those students will, will be at Southwest High School.
Right, and, and, and.
And several students from Hall also.
Well, from what I understand, you know, Hall used to be the ESL concentration. So I don't know what Hall is getting ready to do. From what I understand, ESL people are going to Southwest. Now, I am not, I've been to Southwest, ladies and gentlemen, it is really nice. I'm a vocational person or a career in technical education. And I would love to see career in technical education come back to the middle school. So if they could, if they could bring some of those programs back to the middle schools by the time they got to the high schools, we could be pointing them toward a career. And from what I understand, what's going to be happening with Southwest is Southwest is gonna have some career paths. I'd love to see that work. But you know, we did that with the magnet school and I don't want Southwest to turn into a magnet school. I do not. Because magnet schools did not work. So if you've done it once, why do it again? You see? I'm, I'm just, anybody else have an opinion?
What?
Well, I was thinking, Ms.
Magnet schools do.
I'm sorry.
Do not work. I was wondering.
Why do I feel like they don't work?
Well, yeah, you say, because I, because I was the recipient of two magnet schools, elementary and middle school, and I, I think they worked for me. But I, you know, I don't know in terms of just the experience that you had with them.
And as a person of a magnet speciality school, once upon a time, I did see some success in those schools. The concern with the magnet specialty schools were that once the desegregation funded left, there was no sustainability. And of course, it couldn't work because we didn't plan ahead. We're so busy trying to get from under the DSE plan, but we didn't consider those federal dollars coming in to support those schools. But we did not have a sustainability plan to replace that. So yes, they failed because we could no longer have that extra professional staff. We could no longer have those extra type of entities within that school to make them work. So they did. But I want to say, after what Ms. Callaway said about re-assessment, I'm thinking that, and I don't want to quote you wrong, Kennedy Kingsby. He did talk about an assessment already being there. And then someone else said something about starting here and going forward. So we will be taking those assessments under consideration, but because of the new facilities and the closure of several facilities, we do have to do a little revision to those assessments because some of them are obsolete.
Okay, does anybody have a problem?
Need to do new ones.
Does, does anybody have a problem with the fact that when you close schools, you kill neighborhoods?
All right, great discussion.
Yes.
You are going to open all the rooms and once we open the rooms, your 15 minutes will begin.
And there are still several people that have not been assigned to a room because they didn't give a preference. So I'm getting ready to just assign people randomly, but those who got their rooms, here you go. Open our rooms. They should be open and they're 15. And we'll start at zone one. Michael Mason, would you like to answer that question? Yes, sir, I would. Well, depending on.